All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to ask everyone to please stand. And first order of business is have Councilwoman Christopher lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm just going to ask if everyone could please stay standing. I probably should have said that before we did the pledge. But unfortunately, the community lost a very valuable member over the weekend. Lieutenant John Quilter passed away. As probably most of you know, his wake is tonight. That's the reason why some of us aren't here yet. But from someone who was actually on the council when we appointed him in 1999, we were a better town with him. He was not only a great police officer, but even better family man and just person and friend. He's going to be sorely missed. Certainly, we'll never forget him. But at this point, I would just like to ask if does anyone else want to say anything before we have a quick moment of silence in his honor? Anybody on the council? But thank you again. And if we could just have a moment of silence in honor of Lieutenant John Quilter. Thank you very much, everyone.
Chris, my dad, he just celebrated his 49th birthday. And his son, his wife just had a little, what, girl, wasn't I thought?
Little boy.
Little boy. So he was able to see his grandson.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So as we move on to the regular part of our meeting, we don't have a presentation. We're going to move that to, we're going to have something on February 3rd, but no public hearing as well this evening. So we can move right to item three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 regular meeting.
Second.
All right. Any comments, questions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, announcements and reports. Are there any announcements or reports?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairwoman.
Yes, I have attended several meetings to the groups to which I'm a liaison. And I'll just mention the Library Board of Trustees. I attended last week, and they did go over very thoroughly the director's proposed budget and did approve that. And of course, that will continue to go through the regular budget steps after this. But yeah.
All right. All right, thank you. Anyone else with an announcement or report?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Economic Development met last Thursday, which I'm liaison to, and they discussed a new idea calling Explorer Plainville Passport Contest. And they're looking to do something where people could pick up a passport, which would have businesses on it. And there would be some rules as far as how many businesses you'd have to attend, go to, and then a minimum amount to spend. And then that passport, you know, would get like a hole punch or something. And then once you've fulfilled those requirements, you can be entered into a contest to win some sort of gift card somewhere in Plainville. And it's going to be done throughout the year. And I think it's going to be a great way to engage people into the Plainville businesses as well as get people from outside of Plainville to Plainville. So as the details get ironed out and we start this contest, I will keep you updated. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with an announcement or report this evening? All right, hearing none. We will move to item five, appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to accept would regret the resignation of Adam Berudo from the Plainville Fire Department.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to appoint Alan, I'll probably screw up his last name here, Alan Emfoam, Emfoam, 66 Atwood Street as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments or reappointments this evening? All right, we have no Board of Education liaison report tonight. We can move right to item seven, Report of the Town Attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I did want to make some comments tonight. In particular, after our last town council meeting, we had a relatively lengthy letter that had been sent. We had a public presentation. And then there are a number of questions that arose after that that I wanted to just make a few points. So what I wanted to say was, first of all, when you come to these meetings, the town is providing a forum, a public forum for people to speak, and people have every right to do that. And we're not going to censor typically any of the comments or usually, you know, respond in a substantive way. But just because we don't, we're providing a public forum, doesn't mean that we necessarily are endorsing the comments or that we agree with the comments. And the only thing I would say with regard to that is that just because you're in a public forum and the town and the officials at times allow the comments to go forward, that the law still applies to you when you're making any kind of public speech. So the laws of slander and libel, and that is between individuals, has got nothing to do with the fact that we're providing a public forum for people to speak. So I would just remind people of that. And then I also wanted to address the fact that we had released the investigation, the report, redacted report with regard to the fire department investigation. And I did want to make some comments with regard to that, too. So as you know, there was a subcommittee of the council that's been appointed, and they're going to go to work on this. And as far as I know, everything's on the table as far as what they may or may not do. And I think that, you know, there's going to be a process. And I wanted to explain why I have advised generally that the members of the council and administration not publicly comment with regard to the report of the investigation at this point. And eventually, you may be in a position of having to make decisions. You'd be decision makers. And typically, my advice would always be that you don't decide things until you have all the evidence and you've heard both sides or all three sides or whatever, depending on if you read the report. And so I think that, you know, lots of times, people might not understand that type of And the reason I would say that, besides being a town attorney, you know, I've tried a lot of jury cases. And so the judges will always tell the jurors, don't talk about the case till you hear all the evidence, don't discuss it amongst yourselves. And lots of times, jurors don't understand that because it's like the only thing we have in common, we're going to have to decide it, we're going to have to talk about it, why don't we start now? So the reason that the court will tell a juror that is that once you say something in public, it's hard to change your mind. And so you may hear something else in a case later where you would have changed your mind if you hadn't publicly stated something. And so my feeling is whenever you're a decision maker, you should wait to make those kind of comments until you've heard everything. And so I wanted people to understand why we give the type of advice that we do sometimes. And the last thing is that when I read the report, if you look at the, you know, there's been a lot of information, and obviously, we did release a redacted version. So but the conclusion of the report from the investigator, who was independent and obviously spent a lot of time, we have a 31-page report, and there was a lot of other documents referred to. The conclusion was that while all the above being said, the investigator's not making any recommendations, that he basically says that he rejects the belief that you would dismiss members of Group One and rejects the belief that in Group One, that taking any actions toward Management A would solve the problem. So basically, you've got the investigator saying, you know, I looked at all these facts, and I'm giving them to you to decide eventually, but that's what the report says. So it's not like we've received an investigative report, and now the council has created a subcommittee. And I would say that you, as far as advice that we've given on the comments that might be made, that I would, I would continue to ask you not to engage in the public comments, as difficult as that may be, because I really think you should reserve comment. What happens is these, everybody in, everybody here, when you read the report, it's obvious that when they go to a fire, that everyone is together. And regardless of the comments that are made from one side to the other, as I said, there's always two sides. But all these individuals have individual rights that are affected when statements are made. And they also have family members, et cetera. And my advice, as I said, is to reserve comment until everything is in. And I think that they're owed that on both sides. So that's why I give the advice I gave. I have made the statement, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, clarifications? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can move now to item eight, the Report of the Town Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a brief report this evening, four items, three of which I'll report on and then turn over item four happenings to Andy. And I'll begin with item number one, which is the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, referred to as STEEP. STEEP is designed to assist small towns that are not eligible to receive Urban Act funding. Through STEEP, the state of Connecticut provides grants for capital projects such as road improvements, public building renovations, recreational facility upgrades, and other initiatives that bolster community and economic development. Towns can receive up to $1 million annually with a 20% municipal match preferred but not required. By opting into STEEP, our town will gain access to a significant pool of funding. Up to 30 million is allocated statewide for the 2025 grant cycle. The town intends to participate in this grant program specifically to fund recreational facility improvements at Norton Park. And this is adopted in the Capital Improvement Plan, and the planned upgrades include rehabilitation of the tennis and basketball courts. I am recommending that the town council formally opt in to the Small Town Economic Assistance Program. To formalize our opt-in, the town council must pass a motion approving this decision and submit the required documentation to the Office of Policy and Management, OPM. This motion will authorize our participation in the program for the next four years and positioning us to apply for funding during the 2025 grant cycle and the next four years. There is an item under New Business to opt in and authorize me to submit those documents and application to OPM. And I would like to add that during this process, I will also be reaching out to both Representative Martinez and Senator Martin for their support when we go through the application process. So I'll make sure that they're in the loop on that, and it generally helps to have the endorsement of both our representatives. Item two is the Road Bond Program and Issuance. And this was an item that I touched on and talked about at the last meeting, and we discussed at the January 6 meeting, that the town has 328 street sections totaling approximately 67.28 miles of town paved roads. A new round of bond funds will be needed to authorize to continue the repaving program for town roadways and to stay on track to complete the paving all the streets within 20 years. I'm recommending that the future bond authorization be increased from $5 million to $6.5 million. And this increase incorporates an inflation factor of 2.5%. And I think it's just important that we move that level to 6.5 so we're not falling behind and that we continue, because I think it's a very successful program. Along with the road bond funds of 6.5 million, I'm also recommending an additional 1.5 million be added to the bond issue for the development of a public works facility and also a Board of Educational capital project, likely a roof or heating ventilation system upgrade. So the total bond issue will be for 8 million, and this will be for the February meeting with the anticipation that it would be ready to schedule a referendum date vote for mid to late March. This is to time the building season so that we don't lose a season within the construction season of getting that to the market and getting bond authorization to do that. I recognize that there'll be more information we'll need to communicate with respect to the public works or roadways facility. Right now, I can just elaborate a little bit on the fact that we have two aging facilities. And the first thought was to combine them in one location at Norton Park where we currently have, because the roadways location is what I like to refer to as a postage stamp, right? Size lot, which is less than, or I just think about two, almost two acres, a little bit less, but has wetlands and obviously has the landfill that we're capping. So there really isn't anywhere to go in terms of roadways. So the thought was that we'd go to building grounds at Norton Park, and that is obviously met with some resistance with supporters who feel that we shouldn't be in the park to begin with, and that should revert back to other recreational activities, which could do. It means we have to go through an acquisition of land. So we've gone through a process of looking and seeking out potential locations, which we've done. And we looked at the old Ioudie site off Camp Street, and we're pursuing that. But the thought would be a combined location and building one and having some synergies with combining roadways and building and grounds into a traditional public works facility. So that's what's in the works, and it's the initial design and everything that's involved with that process for roadways that we're seeking additional funding in addition to the roadways bond and a school project as well. So that would complete the $8 million request, and we'll have additional, I will have additional information with the Director of Finance as well as we prepare that for February's meeting. And I'll pause there with those two items before going into the financial dashboard just to see if there are any questions on STEEP or the road bond.
Any questions from anyone on the council? Go ahead.
You know, in terms of what will happen with the area in Norton Park where Buildings and Grounds is located now, will the referendum address what we're going to do with that property? Or obviously, there's going to be a time to deal with that once Buildings and Grounds actually moves.
Yeah, it'll be the latter. It'll be over time, we'll be able to deal with that and address that issue with the details, but not on the front end with the authorization.
Right, because it's going to take time, obviously, before the new facility is ready. But just, I think that, you know, offers some interesting, some very positive, you know, possibilities in terms of our park.
Right.
All right, anyone else? All right, on to financial dashboard.
Yeah, and I'll start with saying that the financial dashboard looks great. It's right in line, and so I'll try to get through this without boring you to death. But I'm trying to use my own sheet here to, I noticed the reduced size there is a bit difficult to read. So I'll do my best in reading my own charts. But on the beginning slide, the first page, as always, we start with the expenditure, general government side, total expenditure through 1231, $36,814,992. We are running just slightly below the two-year average. Two-year average is 52.31. We're running at 51.14. And that breaks down on the general government side, we have expended $15,379,227, and that represents 57.58%. We're again, under the two-year average on the general government side, the two-year average is 59.33. So we're running okay. Same with the Board of Education. Board of Education has expended $21,435,765. That represents 47.34%, and it's running under the two-year average of 48.17. So again, with respect to expenditures, we're right in line. I might be out of order here, and I just want to make sure that I am in sync with what you have before you. Yes, okay. Next page is the overtime budgets for police and dispatch. Police budget is $500,000, the dispatch is $20,000. The police actual expenditure through 1231 has been $291,162, and no overtime has been spent on dispatch. So the $291,162 is running higher than the two-year average of $269,698 by approximately On the roadways overtime expenditure, their overtime budget is $85,895. Their actual spend was $67,259. On their snow budget for roadways, their budget is $53,325. They've actually spent $7,768. They have a total expenditure thus far of $70,027. The two-year average is $68,391, so they're over by $6,636 on their budget. In Building and Grounds overtime expenditures, their regular overtime is $38,603, the actual is $40,404. Their snow budget, $26,943, actual spent $6,429. So their total expenditure in overtime, $48,833, with the two-year average, $29,434. Obviously, the note you can see on the side there of the box, a difference related to, obviously, the balloon festival and the snow numbers from 2024 as of December 31st. So not totally unexpected, given the fact that we reintroduced the balloon festival. We've been carrying that number as a footnote. Onto the solid waste. Solid waste, the trend continues with tons through, tons recorded through 1231, 3,060 tons, and the two-year average is 2,980. So we're running just almost 80 tons above what we were for the two-year, what we have done for the two-year average. So the same trend on the other side in terms of recycling. The total tons through 1231 is 533, and the two-year average is 597. So there's a difference of 64, approximately 64 tons there. So that shift from municipal solid waste and recycling, or recycling to municipal solid waste bumping those numbers up. So that has not changed. The numbers are consistent. Next is our town revenue. And town revenue looks good. Through December 31st, we have received total town revenue of $44,8747. That represents 61.24%, which is slightly above the two-year average at 58.42. And current tax revenue brought in through 1231, $38, excuse me, $38,849,397, representing 71%, 71.46%, and the two-year average is 68.04. So again, on both the expenditure side and revenue side, we're looking good, under on the expenditures, over on the revenue. So in between with the different budgets, we have some different issues with overtime and personnel. That's kind of skewing those numbers. But the general fund is next. Those numbers have not changed. We're with the estimated unassigned fund balance, the unaudited at, sitting at $11,375,221, represents 15.8%. And the estimated unassigned fund balance, we predict for 2025 would be $9,950,721 or 13.82%, still a healthy percentage that we maintain. So nothing changed there. Onto special revenue funds. We have the Recreation Fund expenditures through December 31st, $155,929. That represents 52.67%, slightly above the two-year average of 50.03. On their revenue side, they have received $66,225, representing just under 30%, so 29.3%. The two-year average is 39. So it is running under, and I think the timing there between the winter and summer programs, typically the summer, spring and summer programs, certainly, those revenues buoy the numbers toward the tail end of the fiscal year. On the Robertson Airport, not much to report there. Everything is flat. Not much has happened since the capital project with the fencing. So that's pretty much unchanged. The Water Pollution Control Fund, the expenditures are higher, $4,033,977, representing 81.18%. The two-year average is 65.16. But the footnote, if you see there, is the higher expenditures due to the $407,192 transfer for the facility study that we talked about for the INI, the info and infiltration study that we're doing there. So that is captured there. Revenue is still running as predicted, right in line. They've received $4,863,495, 109.6% of what they projected, and the two-year average of 112. So right in line with what we would expect for the revenue fund for water pollution control. And that leaves library. The expenditures there, $483,348, representing 60% expended and above the two-year average of 47.32. On the revenue side, $390,759 in revenue. That represents 48.54% in revenue, which is slightly under the two-year average of 49.38. A lot of that has to do with the investments, as I've mentioned before, and there's a note there in terms of the investment losses and their two-year average. So I had a conversation, side conversation with the finance director, and nothing to be worried about there. It just ebbs and flows quarter to quarter. Those investments go up, those investments go down. It is not anything that we should be worried about at this point. We'll continue to monitor that, of course, and report of any changes that we think are significant. And last page is our capital project, major capital projects, and not a whole lot to report there, really unchanged. The numbers are, I believe, exactly as reported from last presentation. Honor Heights is listed. We pretty much finished up there. The Turb- The turf maintenance fund, hasn't been any change there. ARPA, we wrapped up and put those obligations into motion, and Whiting Street won't be complete until next spring. And then, of course, we are addressing the next allocation for the road bonds. So that pretty much wraps up the financial dashboard report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anyone with any questions on anything with the town manager's report or the financial dashboard report? Looks like we're ready for happenings.
Sounds good. Just got a few for you, somewhat of a short list this week. The first is the governor initiated the extreme weather protocol, which was effective as of Sunday. And this protocol goes through noon on Friday, January 24th. I just want to share that the Plainville Public Library serves as our local warming center, and the library's hours are Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There are other warming centers in surrounding communities. Individuals interested in just learning more about that can call 211 or go to 211ct.org. I know there's some in New Britain and Bristol. So if you need any help, you can also call the town manager's office. And from the senior center. So for all information on senior center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The income tax preparation appointment signups for 2025 have begun. The Plainville Senior Center will once again be hosting AARP tax aid free programs to provide income tax preparation assistance by certified volunteer tax counselors to low and moderate income taxpayers. Appointments will be on Tuesdays, February 4th through Tuesday, April 8th, and on Fridays, January 31st through April 11th. Appointments are required, and please call the senior center. The diabetes support group and education is meeting on Monday, January 27th, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Veteran's social hour is on Tuesday, January 28th at 10:30 a.m. This is a monthly information and support meeting conducted by Sherri Voe, the Veterans' Service Liaison. And finally, the vision support group is meeting on Tuesday, January 28th at 10:30 a.m. This group is open to all individuals with low vision, no vision, and anything in between. The group provides an opportunity to meet with other individuals with vision impairments, to share information, ideas, concerns, ask questions, and discuss products and services. And that's all I have today.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone for anything between the assistant town manager or town manager before we open it up for public comment? All right. Then at this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means that time has run out. So who would like to address the council this evening? Yes?
I'm Dana Snell. I'm here with Ally Sossier.
Dana, sorry to interrupt. Do you mind just pressing the button on your microphone?
Press the button on the bottom, the big circle.
We got to make sure the people at home can hear you, too.
There you go.
Hi, guys. I'm Dana Snell, and this is Ally Sossier, and we're here representing the kids in the middle program. The Kids in the Middle Program is a program that we do at the middle school where kids do outreach. We wanted to share that we're getting ready to do our Chase the Chill event. We did that last year. And the health teacher, about three years ago, I came on board. But for eight years, we've been getting hand-knit scarves. It's a national initiative, hand-knit scarves and hats for people who are cold. The idea is to bring arts and warmth to the community, and they're outside, so people can just take them. Doesn't matter. They don't have to qualify. We were wonderful. We've done it for eight years, and nobody ever had anything to say until I had a bright idea to go beyond the areas that we went. And then there was some controversy in regards to things being left in the park and different areas. So we wanted to come back and let you know that we're getting ready to do it again and how meaningful it is. And I wanted Ally to kind of share her experience and what, how important this is to help people stay warm.
Hi.
Good evening.
I don't really know what this is.
Say your name.
Oh, hi. My name is Ally. And I'm in the KIM club, and we do Chase the Chill to help keep the homeless and people in need warm during winter, because sometimes people who need it don't have access to warmth.
Tell them why, how it makes you feel to do it.
It makes me feel happy that people get to get what they need, just for no cost.
Ally's a rock star, and she's like our primo primo wonderful young person. And so we want to make sure that when we're talking about and seeing our kids in the community do positive things, that we are supporting them and know that they are being guided. We have some other strategies around not having the same thing happen again as last year. And if you have more questions or if you want to donate things, you can bring it to Plainville Youth Services, or the middle school, or call me.
All right. Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you for that. Good luck. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Kislik.
Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
I want to touch on the town attorney's comments a little bit. If anybody in this town appreciates the right to address you, it's me. And I don't think I've, I know he wasn't picking on me. I don't think I ever slandered anybody, but we have issues that I get pretty hot and worked up on. So, you know, I'm trying to work on it and try not to get so worked up, but I'm doing the best I can. The other thing, last meeting, I talked about the sale of parkland for $53,100. And I don't know if it's coincidence that Mark DeVoe was here, but it was great of him to explain that, I believe, the town council learned something everybody else in town. And as far as Mark goes, he's a short timer now. He doesn't have much time left for retirement, and he is a wealth of knowledge. I attended a meeting, planning and zoning, on Thursday. This guy, I mean, he knows the laws inside, out, and backwards. It was really, really great the way, you know, he can make a meeting go the right way. And also, when Mark, he brings up things that I don't think anybody knows about. You know I'm not a fan of the trail design. I would like a trail, but the design is terrible. When he mentioned that they wanted to go up Webster Street, I said, there's something wrong with these people who do that. They don't have a clue about Plainville. Webster Street ties into Pine Street, Forestville Avenue, and West Main Street altogether. I live on Forestville Avenue, so I know. Once you, once you go, if you go from Pine Street and you turn to West Main, there's a bus stop for the big, huge buses. And if you go from West Main to go to Forestville Avenue or Pine Street, 90% of the cars that turn up to Pine Street cross one or more lanes. There's been a lot of accidents there. And I'm thinking, where would pedestrians go with something like this? And I know we're probably not going to use that, but that's the mentality of these people. They're just, they don't know anything about our town. They don't know anything about the traffic, the people, you know? Where would they go from there? Be so dangerous, it's unbelievable. Last thing I have is charter revision. You're planning a charter revision again. I don't know, I mean, to me, it doesn't matter who's on the charter revision commission they're going to bring for the issues that the people get to vote on. My personal opinion, if the town manager residency requirement is on there again, I believe it will be, it will get defeated more than the 1,838 votes, because people are more up on this now and what happened. So that's just my opinion on that one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Yes, Gail.
Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. First, I want to thank the town manager for, I haven't been here in a long time, for appearing at the wonderful Halloween thing and being in the casket. I couldn't see you because there was all these tall people with their cameras, but I got so excited afterwards. It's my favorite holiday. So at any rate, thank you. Nice to see somebody with a sense of humor. So, but things have been kind of depressing me lately, running into people, you know, who need my soda bottles. I heard that Stop &amp; Shop might be closing their place down for, you know, bringing your bottles, because people are starting to bring more than 240, which apparently is state law. I see it noted in a lot of places. Anyhow, I just, I would like, people think I'm crazy, but we have, at my apartment, we have a lot of people who throw their bottles away. An apartment building, and a lot of young people just trash them. And I think other people might, too. So I'd like to see somewhere where we could collect them. And there's a lot of homeless people in this town. And this one lady I saw at the post office was saying, people don't think there are any. And she said, well, they all come to New Britain. You know, she knows. She works with a group there. And so I just think it would be kind of good to save up the bottles. We don't have to have a big one. I'd like to see a building that would be open just on the cold nights, so these people have somewhere to go. I asked one man where he went, and he said, down where the railroad tracks are, they'd set up tents. And I asked, I had to go to the police one day, and I asked about it. I mean, I don't want to take a bus. Half of the people don't have money to get to a bus. You know, and you have to wait out in the cold. One guy was trying to get money for coffee, but it's just like, it's really cold this year. I mean, actually, it's normal. I grew up in the northwest corner, so it seems normal. But anyhow, I just would like to see something done. It doesn't have to be very big. Costs about $1,000 to build a playroom for the cats at a shelter up in Cranby. So I figure a small place where people could get warm. That's all. You know? That's it. I don't know how the zoning would be, but, or somewhere else, just an idea.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we will close public comments. We are going to move past old business, and we can go right to item 11, new business.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to opt in to the small town economic assistance program effective January 21st, 2025, and authorize the town manager to notify the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions, or any follow-up to what we talked about earlier? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Establishing and Charging a Charter Revision Commission," and it shall read, "Be it resolved this 21st day of January 2025 by the Town Council of the Town of Plainville duly assembled that a charter revision commission be established pursuant to CGS 7-190, consisting of seven members as follows: Michelle Kaput, Daniel Soselski, Thomas Fode, Sandra Hergot, Dawn Labella, Kristen Shores, Dana Snell. Be it further resolved that said charter revision commission shall submit its first draft of said charter revision to said council honor before June 16th, 2025, and be it further resolved that said charter revision commission shall consider the following provisions in a revised charter: Division of Fire Services, Town Manager Residency, and any other section or chapter they deem necessary."
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes care of new business. We are up to item 12, other discussions of interest. Do you want to, do you have something tonight?
I do not.
Okay. The one thing, I do have something to report. State Representative Rebecca Martinez wasn't able to be here. She had another meeting she needed to be at, but she did want me to share a couple things that are going on at the state level. They were sworn in. She was sworn in as a state representative and has already begun getting to work on behalf of the residents of Plainville in the 22nd District. She's eager to work with the town council during this legislative session in the year ahead. She's been assigned to the appropriations, public health, general law, and children's committees. This session, she plans to work on many important issues that include addressing affordability to live in our state, high electricity costs, access to quality, affordable healthcare for patients, and safety for healthcare workers. She's also worked on, she's also working on introducing legislation to increase safety regulations for ReWorld, which was formerly Covanta, as well as addressing some noise issues to improve the quality of life for our residents. And a top priority of hers will be to making, will be making sure that Plainville receives its fair share of state funding when it comes to securing any resources or grants that the town is eligible for, including education funding, especially related to the middle school, and special education funding. She's also put into, in addition to the Plainville Middle School, she's put in legislation to request a space waiver that will allow the town to seek some additional reimbursement on that particular project. She thanks us for the opportunity to submit these comments in writing, and again, she's tremendously looking forward to working with the town and the Plainville Town Council on these issues and more. If anyone has any questions or comments for us, she says you can feel free to reach out to her. She's at rebecca martinez@cga.c t.gov, or 860-240-8568. All right. Thank you for indulging me with that. Any other discussions of interest?
I just have a quick comment. Two things. Dana, I love that program that Kids in the Middle does, and when you see Ally, give her a high five from me that she did a great job. And the other thing is, Gail, and I'm sorry I don't know your last name. I agree with you. Plainville needs a warm and shelter at night. It's, not everybody can get to another town. We need to figure something out.
I just have to ask one yes or no question.
If it's yes or no, go ahead.
What happened with DEEP?
That doesn't sound like a yes or no question, but that's okay. I don't.
DEEP has recommended, DEEP has come forward and said that they are in favor of the medical, bringing the medical waste. That doesn't mean it passed, but they are in favor of it.
I wrote a letter.
I think a lot of us did. Yes.
Chris? I think, yeah, they did say they recommend it, and they're recommending it to the commissioner of DEEP.
Medical article?
Yeah, it's being recommended to the commissioner, from what I understand, yeah.
This question's for the town manager. Yeah, go ahead. Gail, as far as what you just said, Michael, we did a resolution to the medical waste plant.
plant as a council, saying that we were in disagreement with them building a medical waste plant in Bristol. Did you ever get any comment on that?
I don't recall getting any comment. I'll check with Lisa tomorrow on that, but I don't know that we've gotten any feedback.
It was the letter sent.
Yeah, I'll confirm.
So that would make us the second town in the area.
The central town.
That's the southern town, I'm assuming.
Right. Yeah.
It looks like you want to say something more.
I do. I've been talking to people who have received their second electric bill. We talked about it last council meeting. My sister-in-law got her electric bill, it was three hundred dollars that went to the special tax. My hairdresser told me yesterday that hers was a hundred and, a hundred and ninety-five dollars, the special tax, the public, I can't remember if it's the public whatever, benefit. I got my electric bill, I was right in my assumption, it was a hundred and fifty dollars, and I expect next month, because of the cold weather, to be around two hundred, and my sister-in-law's to be around four hundred. And when you're talking dollars like that and you're thinking people are outside freezing to death because they don't have lodging or a place to go, that a lot of this money would be better served if they sent it over to the communities to build public housing or some kind of shelter for those less fortunate. And we're supposed to be paying some of the people who can't afford their electric bill, but all this is doing is putting more and more people into that same category that they expect the people of Plainville to pay. Totally against it. I'm hoping that we do a resolution soon stating that we would like the state legislators to at least come up with something other than this public benefit. And I just want to let everybody know how I feel as a council member. Plainville should not be even looking at this as a special tax, because by the time they get done, the people of Plainville will be paying about a thousand bucks a year per household. That's all I have to say.
All right. And I do know that, it sounds like the state legislature, now that they're in session, that is one of the, I don't want to say priorities, I don't want to...
At least three or four bills.
Yeah, they're certainly looking to address it. How they address it and what ends up happening, I don't know, but at least we got them talking, and it sounds like both sides are actually talking about it, so it's a good start.
And I do know on social media, there were sixty comments made in regards to the public benefit tax, of people who are saying that this is outrageous. So hopefully, they will look at it.
Okay. All right.
One bill came out, it said a certain amount, I can't remember what. So I called the P, and I, forty dollars or less, you know, I guess they have a dummy?
I don't mean to interrupt you, Gail, but I'm going to, because if I keep letting you talk, John is going to get very uncomfortable over there. But, but thank, if you want to talk, we'll be here after. If you want to continue talking, I'll stay as long as you want. That's not a problem. But thank you for bringing it up. Actually, you created quite a bit of conversation tonight, so that's always a good thing. Any other discussions of interest?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to follow up on Counselor Underwood's comments for the utility bill, I believe there was a general consensus of the council to bring an item back for resolution, petitioning the state for relief, for lack of better phrasing, so that I can prepare that for the February third meeting.
Okay.
If that's still the general consensus.
Yes, it is for me.
Yes.
I would imagine everybody's a yes.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I would reiterate, too, that I think it should be in fairly general terms, in terms of relief, or to address the cost of electricity versus, you know, choosing one of the specific solutions or ideas that are currently floating around, because there's a lot being suggested. You know, I've been following this in the news, and there's a variety of bills and ideas that are floating around, so just wanted to reiterate that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. So we'll handle that. February third is our next regular meeting. We have no matters appropriate for executive session, so a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good rest of your week.